It's 3:00 PM, 2:00 to 4:00 for sun. And we'll begin our process. So we'll start, the whole call starting with Councilor.
Rachel Liffles.
Gary Garrett.
Becky Bogdan.
Craig Christensen.
Catrice McKay.
We excuse Councilor Hanley, who should join us shortly, is commuting, and also Councilor Hoben, who is traveling and but may join us later tonight. We welcome representatives of the administration also. It's proposed that we approve the following minutes, August 5th, 2025 council meeting and September 23rd, 2025 work meeting. Are there any objections or requested changes to these minutes? If not, we'll go ahead and approve them by unanimous consent. Next, we have a discussion regarding the Neighborhood District Programs yearly report and possible code changes that will be presented to us by our Community Relations Coordinator, Rachel Breen. Hello, Rachel.
May it be difficult, Maynem.
Yeah.
Shen mother.
Probably feeling like all those things.
Good afternoon, councilors. Appreciate the opportunity to do my yearly report on the Neighborhood District Program. So first of all, talking about attendance at our meetings, every year, the attendance has about doubled on it. We're first year about in the twenties and then in the forties, and now we've been averaging about eighty people. We did have Oh, sorry.
That's remarkable. Looking at this in the pre-work, I look at it as, my goodness. To see that kind of increase is just
That kind of public engagement.
Yeah. To mark. Hey, George.
Hey. Since Rachel stepped away from the mic, well, welcome, Councilor Hanley.
Okay, yeah, so I've been very pleased. We did have some major meetings that kind of boosted our numbers, but even without those, you can see that every district has gained numbers. I think as word gets out and people understand the value of the meetings, they've really appreciated being able to speak directly to city staff and to get their questions answered, and they really appreciate that the councilors are there, listening to their concerns. The only dip we had was District Four, whose they lost two of their neighborhoods when we changed the map around. So theirs dipped, but then it it went back up even with two fewer districts.
Where did those two neighborhoods go into which district?
So Pleasant View went into District One and University went into District Five.
Okay.
So District Four lost two, but they're still gaining numbers. And besides attending the meetings, like you can see that District Three has the the lowest attendance at the meetings, but they also have the highest views on social media. And I think most of that is Councilor Bogdan sharing the posts.
For years, four years, four years. I wondered about that myself. I wonder if they're just so used to getting the information on Facebook.
Yes.
He definitely would.
But as you can see, we don't like, you can't even see the line of followers like it's we have so few that actually follow the official Neighborhood District Facebook pages. But then we get very few visits, but they get shared. The ones who do see it, share it. And so you can see that they do get a lot of views compared to the followers or the visits. So people are seeing the posts about the meetings. And so that's been helpful.
And I do, I do have people from outside of District Three that do follow me as well. That's good or bad, but I do.
No, I do. I appreciate Councilor Bogdan sharing the post. Also, big shout out to Vicky Connect. She also does a really good job sharing the posts and getting the word out. So I really appreciate the members of the community who look for this information and then share it. We also do our email newsletters. We send out a newsletter a couple of days before the meeting, talking about the agenda. And then we also send it out a few days after the meeting, talking about what was discussed. We also, all the questions that are brought up in the meetings, we reach out to city staff and we get answers to those, and those answers are put in the newsletter and also announced on social media. And the residents really appreciate that transparency and they appreciate that their questions get answered. And so this is just showing our subscribers, not a ton of subscribers, but still a lot more than come to the meeting. So we are getting the word out. People might not be able to attend the meetings, but they are getting the word other ways. And the average email newsletter open rate, the average open rate for a government newsletter is about twenty-three percent. So ours is in the sixty to seventy percent. And so those who receive the newsletter do open them, they do read them. They appreciate that information.
What do you think is going on in District One? That's
District One, they are, I think because they're they're a little bit farther away. They are very engaged.
Their representative doesn't communicate with them well enough, so this is
You gotta get it this way.
So yes, District One is consistently in the seventy percent open rate. And and they're also the most that will participate by Zoom. We get a large group.
But you know, District Three is low.
District Three, they're getting their information from social media.
They are. Yes, they are. And it's not just me. Bruff does tell my social media pages too, when he goes out.
But when we do, when I do outreach, when I'm at the farmer's market, when I'm at various events, talking to citizens, I always ask them how they like to receive their information, and it's a mixed bag. Some like to come in person, some like the newsletters, they like emails, some like social media. So that's why we're doing all three, because that's what I'm hearing from residents. And so we're trying to get as much information as we can out to them. And I just want to kind of brag a little bit about what our Neighborhood Districts have done this past year. So this is July to July. They've done a ton of service projects. District One, over seven hundred hours of service projects, a lot of pruning hedges, weeding, park cleanups. They, their matching grant projects this past year were the Radar Your Speed signs, one in Sherwood Hills, one in Pleasant View. Pleasant View was very excited that it really has reduced the amount of crashes, and then they just had two crashes recently. But for about six months, they were super excited about how well it worked. The Neighborhood District leaders, they really appreciate the council allowing them to roll over service hours and matching grant funds. That has put gotten rid of a lot of stress that they had. So you can see that they rolled over almost three hundred service hours, and they rolled over a little bit over a thousand dollars in unspent. Oh, I'm sorry, grant funding.
I, you know, I still do meetings. It was really funny. Some of us think about like mowing their lawns, counting that hours for it, like
Yeah, we don't. I I see the hours and what they've marked and I check. Yes. No, no, I have not. I know there was some discussion that people might be counting that, but that is not what has been turned in to me.
But you could mow your elderly neighbors.
Yes, you can mow your neighbors' lawn.
Well, that's that's the whole thing, right, about reaching out to
Just do like
No, 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 no.
Right, yes. So I do, they do send me a list of what was done, the location, how many people, how many hours, and I do go through and I approve those before.
So Rachel, you can roll over one year, right? Just one year.
Right now, we have it, it can just keep rolling over. It's our first year doing it, so we're kind of seeing how it goes. And and I thought, and you'll see that even if they have, I thought maybe it would make it so they wouldn't do as much service if they can roll it over. That has not been the case so far. But it's our first time doing the rollovers. Another big thing in District One, they've really been emphasizing trying to get their community members to slow down in their neighborhoods. We made a flyer with the information, like the council passed the ten miles an hour on sidewalks. And that information, and they, we did flyers and they passed out six hundred and sixty flyers to their neighbors, letting them know that there is no golf carts allowed on the streets and the speed limits.
And how did that work?
I haven't heard back, so we'll see. But they have also purchased slow down yard signs for the neighborhood to put out. And so that was kind of District One's focus this past year, was getting their neighbors.
So those are the signs, I assume, that say twenty is plenty?
And there's, there's other ones also that just say, slow down, or we want that say twenty-five miles an hour, slow down. There's been a variety of signs that they've
Can I just say that I love this because it just gives power to the residents to get the things that they feel that they need, that they come and they can't get any other way.
Right, right. It's it's all resident-led, and it's all coming from them, what their needs are.
And they have to vote on it as a group, don't they, what they're gonna do?
Right, right, because a lot of these, they're using their district budget funds to pay for, and so they vote as a group and decide what they want to do. Then District Two, they got a ton of service hours because of all the mud cleanup. So we were keeping track of that. And they also did a Kiwanis Park cleanup after the Fourth of July. And they had, and this is another reason why I I love that you are now allowing the rollover. They had a grant in place with the Parks Department, and Parks became overwhelmed and said, I'm sorry, we can't do this this year. And so they canceled it last minute, and normally that would be, that money would be lost from no fault of their own. And so this way, it can be rolled over into maybe another parks project. They just with the vandalism at Quail Orchard and getting some of our newer parks done, they just did not have time to do the project. And so it's nice that they can, we can roll that over.
I love that too. And then if they need to do something in addition to that, they also have the shares funds, they could apply to that, correct?
Correct, correct. And so that's why they have a total of eleven thousand in available funds, because they have the seven thousand five hundred from this year, plus the four thousand that was rolled over from last year.
Rachel buy a sneeze in the Parks Department, right?
But and the city has realized, like there's some graffiti going on in the culverts at Slate Canyon, and the city has actually reached out to this Neighborhood District saying, can you do a mural project on this to stop the graffiti?
Oh, that's amazing.
And so they've, the city has realized the importance of the program, how they can get things done that they probably can't do. I don't know if the city has a mural team, but they can go to the citizens. So they're going to discuss this at next week's Neighborhood District Two meeting. They're, they've talked about maybe having a competition of artists in District Two to come up with a plan and use their matching grant funds. They're also gonna see maybe rap tax or some other funds to try to get this done.
Just an idea to throw out there, reach out to Centennial Middle and Timview High School, because those are their feeder schools, and see if those art teachers
Oh, yeah.
Have some kind of, you know, it might be cool to do. If my theory is, is if you're getting high school kids that are vandalized that, get high school kids that are gonna put art up there.
Right.
Maybe some of those graffitiers will be your future artists.
Right, no, that's great. And so really fun. So that's a great way that there's a partnership between the city and the Neighborhood Program, where they work together to solve problems. Kind of things that they've purchased with their district budget, safety vests for when they do cleanups along State Street, treats to encourage children to use the safe routes. They work together with the PTA to have little treat stations so the children know the correct way to watch, to walk to Wasatch Middle School. They did projects at, they did art projects at Slate Canyon Saturday, and they, and Foothills had a big block party where they hired someone to do face painting and other fun things, just a nice fun event. And they're also going to be doing Spring Creek is doing a like, community bike ride that's coming up this next weekend. Kind of some, some highlights, they always do the yearly cemetery cleanup, weeding dumpster cleanups, and their projects were, they did the Your Speed sign in the Wasatch neighborhood, and they've got the cement poured and a bench put up at the Slate Canyon Trailhead. And we're still waiting on the bike rack. Parks hasn't decided where they're putting that bike rack yet.
Amazing.
Yeah, so
It's something they can be proud of. I mean,
Yeah.
Even little kids, right? You did service hours, and this is what your minimum work. This is what your hours meant for.
Yeah, it's, it's really fun. It really empowers the neighborhood and the residents to see something physical from their, from their, all their hard work. Okay, District Three, they, they did a lot of trail cleanup, playground improvements, picking up trash. They, they had an area that's been bugging them for a long time, this frontage road that's just turned into kind of a mud area, and the Amazon trucks get stuck in it. It's a UDOT road, and so they've never been able to do anything. So they use their funds and they worked with UDOT to get a bunch of rocks to lay down. So then that way, the trucks don't get stuck anymore, and they also purchase no dumping signs. And so it's, I've driven by it a few times. It looks a lot better. And and then they also did some other fun projects. They did a clothing co-op where people brought their used clothes and traded. They had a pool party at the rec center, and they've been promoting local business. They do a little raffle of thread bags at their meetings, trying to get more people to come. Fun. Neighborhood District Four, they did their big hillside cleanup project that they work with, with the fire department. The fire department really appreciates that because this is on private property, so the fire department can't go on there and clean up the shrubberies, so they depend on the residents to do it. It's a very big project. Residents only like to do it every other year, so they really appreciate being able, being able to roll over since it's not a yearly project. But they got a lot of service hours from that. And I also heard from residents that doing a huge project like that altogether just gives them a sense of community. Because it is, it is going up steep hills and chopping down branches and bringing them down. And it's, it's a hard project, but they really enjoy it. And kind of some of what they spent with their budget money, they did a patriotic display on the south side of Grandview Hill. They had a Carterville Neighborhood Party that was really fun. And the Grandview Pickleball Tournament that they're hoping to make a yearly event. And they purchased two of the Radar Speed signs, one in Carterville and one on fourteen sixty North in Grandview. And they also partnered with Community Actions, Community Garden. They wanted, and I don't have a picture, they have created the garden boxes. And their neighbor, they had a lot of problems with their neighbor because the neighbor didn't want plants going up on that fence. So they purchased trellises with the matching grant money. And so now they have a trellis right next to the fence that the vines and things can grow on. So and they also the residents clean up the garden like twice a year for that. So that has been really fun for them to see that. And I know those speed signs work because every time I'm on Carterville Road, I'm like, oh, I gotta slow down. So it's working for me. And I've seen other people slow down too when they get up to it. So we appreciate Vern working with the neighborhoods to do that. And then Neighborhood District Five, they did kind of a fun project. They had, this was actually an HOA property, but it faces the street. It's right on the roundabout on Freedom and nine twenty South as you're heading towards the mall. And so they put in Waterwise Landscaping, which will save money for the HOA. But they planted a bunch, they worked with Chaz Addis to do a bunch of trees. And so once those get a little bit bigger, it's gonna be a nice shaded walkway as people are walking to the mall. So that'll be really nice. And they did a bunch, they always get a lot of service hours because a lot of them are involved with my hometown. And so that's been fun seeing that.
How many service hours do they have to have to meet their
So they need five hundred service hours. And so there's really been, they've really been motivated now that they know that these can roll over. It somehow made them work more. I thought it'd be the, the opposite. And they've actually already have done a matching grant for this year, one of the Radar Speed signs on one hundred North between five hundred West and nine hundred West. So that's just been approved, and the money has been sent to Public Works, so that should be going up pretty soon. And they had, of course, their Mazer Block Party. Yes. And we love that. A lot of the other neighborhood chairs went to the Mazer Block Party, and that inspired them to do their own block parties. And shout out to Daniela Castro, Franklin South Neighborhood Chair, who passed out over eight hundred flyers for our Spanish Town Hall.
She's amazing.
So and so that was, that was just amazing, the, the works that they've done in that community. And okay, now some, that was kind of the report of what's been going on. And then here are some concerns that have come up this year. One of them is, we had one of our Neighborhood District One Board members was appointed to the Planning Commission. It has always been customary that if you're appointed to the Planning Commission, you step down as a neighborhood Chair, Neighborhood District Board Member. But there's nothing, there's no policy, there's no code, nothing in writing that that's what you do. It's just what we've always done. It's, it's in our history, but it's never been in a handbook. It's never been in the code. So my first question is, is this something that you think needs to be added? We feel like it only pertains to the Planning Commission, because the other boards and commissions, the Neighborhood Program doesn't really have, they're not up there making public comment at those. It's only Planning Commission. So do we want to have it, because we could do it just in policy, I can add it to the handbook and to their training that they step down once appointed, or do we want it in the code? Yes.
Let's see, let's keep this as simple as we can, and let's just change that to handbook. That would be mine. Two cents. I don't think we need to go to the code. We don't need more code.
Brian, what's your, do we need it in code, or is it okay to do it in a book?
We, we do have it in code that if they're running for public office, that that part is in code. We don't have anything about the Planning Commission. It's just always been tradition that they step down.
Yeah, I think the handbook is fine. The code in another provision delegates authority to the Council Director to establish further rules and regulations for the program in the handbook. So I, I think the code already exists to give him the authority to do that, so I think that's fine.
Okay, okay. I'll just add that to the handbook and training. Thank you. Okay, here's another one. This came from one of my Carterville Neighborhood Representatives. He, it's kind of the last many years, the representatives for the Carterville Neighborhood have always been from Upper Carterville. So he lives in Lower Carterville. And he feels like there hasn't been good representation for Lower Carterville. Kind of the emphasis has been what's, what's happening to Upper Carterville, and that his area has been ignored. And so he came up with some ideas, and I said I would pass them along to the council to split the Carterville Neighborhood along the Provo River. Upper Carterville would continue to be called the Carterville Neighborhood, Lower Carterville. He suggested Brickyard Neighborhood, since this was the area for the old brick factory for Provo. Neighborhood District Four has five neighborhoods currently. All the other districts have six, eight, or nine neighborhoods, so this would bring up District Four to six neighborhoods. Carterville does have a lot more population than the other neighborhoods in District Four. There is a precedent. The Neighborhood Program started with nineteen neighborhoods. Now we have thirty-four. The most recent splits were in nineteen ninety-six, when they split Lakeview North and Lakeview South, and nineteen ninety-seven, when they split Dixon and Tim. And this was kind of his idea, like this is the, this is where it's divided now on State Street, so all of this is Carterville. And he's suggesting that that's where it's split, that Brickyard to be where it's outlined in black. And the Carterville focus is mostly single family. There's a lot of commercial storm drain issues. That's kind of what they've mostly talked about is the storm drain, which is being done now. They have State Street and University Parkway as their main roads. But keep in mind that now we also have all those apartments at the Mix at Rivers Edge. So it's not quite all single-family homes now. That's, has changed. The Brickyard, mostly apartments, it goes all the way to kind of the BYU area. Lot of commercial, a lot of problems with parking. They had, they do have a permit program. They have a lot of people from BYU that park there, people at the hospital, Freedom Festivals, a lot of parking problems. Yes.
So where was the Brickyard?
I'm not sure. He just
Granbury and Old Mill and
May, maybe. He just had mentioned that this used to be where the Brickyard was, but I'm not sure where that Brickyard.
I haven't either.
I haven't either.
So I'm not sure where he got that
I
Information.
I do have some comments. To me, it doesn't matter which neighborhood you're in. There's always something different going on on the other end of the neighborhood.
Right.
And in the old style, that's where the more savvy neighborhood chairs would have a vice chair from the other side of the neighborhood.
Right.
So that you had all
Voices.
Yeah, and representation in there. So I'm not concerned about that as much. And my question would go back to has the lower half or the half that he's advertising for ever ran for a neighborhood chair, ever really, really stepped up before now? To me, it would have to be something more than, than just that in order to split. And then I guess it comes down to what I've been struggling with for the last little bit is what exactly is the role of the Neighborhood Program? And having him in a district forum, because in a district forum right now, we have, what, two neighborhood chairs per neighborhood?
Correct.
Which satisfies that issue anyway, and they're supposed to work together as a board. So the way I saw it was you take care of your neighborhood, but if it's anything within the district, you have to come together with your district and make those decisions together as a district, not one neighborhood chair that trolls the whole entire district. So I mean, what's, what's even the advantage now that you have them in a district of even having a second neighborhood? And what is the vision of the program and the neighborhoods and the what's the reasoning, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
Right.
For discussion?
Yeah, I think, I, I think he's just maybe thinking that if, if there's two representatives from upper and two representatives from lower, that maybe they would have more of a say. I know when we appoint the neighborhood chairs, we do, like I show you a map of where they're at, because I know we, we want to make sure it's not two, two next door neighbors. We, like you said, there are very different. like I show you a map of where they're at, because I know we we want to make sure it's not two two next door neighbors. We, like you said, there are very different. Um points, you know, depending on where your neighborhood is. And so just trying to find it. I know that you're cognizant of that and you take that into consideration when you're choosing who's going to be on the boards. So it could just be um making no change at all, leaving it how it is. Um. You could, we could do a policy where, kind of like what we're doing now, where we just try to make sure that the neighborhood is is covered and you don't have just representatives on one side that you taking into consideration, but it also matters who applies.
So um maybe I missed this, but when you were saying there are fewer neighborhoods in this district, does that mean they have fewer board members?
They do have fewer board members.
But the population of the district is roughly approximate to every other, so.
Cool.
I.
Correct.
Seems like there's a, there's a good reason to want more representation on the board.
And I know that District Four, they were concerned when they did lose their two neighborhoods when we split that up. That all of a sudden their board became a lot smaller. Where they have ten members on their board and like District Five has eighteen. Where.
I don't know. I don't.
I don't.
Downside to it, but um if it weren't necessary, maybe, but it sounds like it sounds like they have an argument that they're not getting the same numbers as other districts.
Well, District Three has how many on the board? Just because they don't have two per.
That's true. District Three has very few, just because we haven't been able to fill. And the handouts that I ha- I handed out to you to have are two point two nine chapter. It also has a map of the districts and a list of all the board members.
But that is a good point, George. I mean, some some people just aren't very active and you might not be able to find a second one for the Brickyard area.
Right, because that's always a concern.
It is hard if you don't have an active board. That's something that I'm hearing from District Threes. If you don't have a very active board. It's really hard for one person to carry out that way.
Right. And that was one of the points of going to the district program was so that um these areas that had more leadership and more time that they could kind of carry the the neighborhoods.
So Rachel, was this issue raised just by this gentleman in the Brickyard?
Correct.
Carterville Neighborhood, or was it taken to the board leadership of District Four and they all agree?
As far as I know, it's just from the gentleman from the Lower Carterville area.
You know, that goes back to my point is what is the what is the thing? Do they have that much autonomy? Or is it something that needs to come back to the board?
Right, because because I can always.
I think this should have been run by the board first, too.
Because we, I can certainly run it by the board.
I think that's what I would recommend too, Rachel. Maybe if they're aware of the issue, or maybe they would alleviate some of the concerns.
Right. I'll see.
Makes sense.
No, that makes sense.
Because we do have them in districts for reasons.
Right.
And they need, to me, they need to be communicating with that board instead of having. I don't know. That's this is still a discussion I want to have is, you know, how much autonomy do they have? When it comes to their neighborhood, do they have the autonomy or do they have the autonomy when it comes to the entire district? Is that something that for the entire district that they need to have that discussion with the board? I mean, that was my understanding of why we put them in these groups. Is so to give them the autonomy in their neighborhoods. But if it's something to do with the entire district, they should come together and and have those discussions.
Sure, first.
Yeah.
Could reach.
More representation interests me, like I see no downside of that, unless it just becomes crazy where everyone's wanting to break up all of it.
Right.
Yeah, it just sets a precedent that I'm not sure we
Right.
enough about. Anyone in the city could step forward and say, my neighborhood is underrepresented. I'd like to split off and create a new neighborhood.
Correct.
Well, do we look at that through population though? I mean, should we look at that as a policy through population, once you hit a certain? But I don't like how they did Lakeview North and Lakeview South because there's no clear cut division and people are very confused on who's in north and who's in south. Right? So I think that needs to be very clear. Even with Lakewood, it's not a clear chop off block. It's somebody's property land somewhere out in the middle of the field. So, yeah.
Well, I can certainly run it by uh District Four, see how they feel about it and.
That would be a good next.
And bring it back. And I think, I think that is all unless you have questions or concerns for me and the program.
Well, just to reiterate what Counselor Christensen said earlier, thank you, Rachel, for making this program so successful. And um inclusive. It's a, it's a great program. As I was reading through this as well, I wondered how many other cities have this intensive of a program within their city that engages neighborhoods?
Um I had a lady that's running for Eagle Mountain Mayor. She's currently a councilman bringing her mountain. That Cliff, because you know Cliff was up there with their council, had mentioned that Provo does this. And so she's, I'm sure when she gets done with all of this, I give her Rachel's information that she can reach out. Because that's an engagement tool that apparently Cliff was impressed enough about, that he passed on.
Yeah.
And I I had a a citizen from Tree Mountain contact me yesterday wondering about the program she wants to approach her city about having one. Because they're growing and they don't feel like
Right.
they have anything in place for them to know about growth or even how to come to a public hearing or anything like that.
Well, that's wonderful, Rachel. Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation and your continued great work.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Seems like we can best support you by continuing to attend the district meetings as our schedules permit.
Yes, that's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Next, we'll have a presentation regarding the annual fraud risk assessment. Presented by our finance director, Dan Pollitt. Hello, Dan, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Each year, uh we have the opportunity to review the fraud risk assessment uh with the council. Yes, so if we could go forward, in fact, probably three pages from there. And then maybe one page back from there, sorry. Yeah, that's the page. Um. I'm going to start on this page. Uh and and the areas that uh I will start and review with the council are the areas where we did not give ourselves uh either full credit or there was uh an exception or a mitigating control and and talk about why. So on this page, um if we look at number three, are all the people who are able to collect cash or check payments different from all the people who are able to adjust customer accounts? And in the vast majority of cases throughout the city, uh the answer is yes. Uh in one area, in the engineering area, with respect to um engineering fees and permit fees. Um the person uh that that handles and manages that area has the ability to make adjustments and needs to be able to make those adjustments. So for a mitig- mitigating control that we put in place, we have a system generated report that's generated each month. And it's reviewed by management to ensure that all the adjustments are proper, correct, reasonable. Uh and and we feel like that control is working well and inadequate in that situation. So that is, um that is the only item on the basic separation of duties. Where we don't have um a solid yes answer, but again, we feel like we have adequate mitigating controls. Um and based on that, if we go back one page. Uh this is the overall risk assessment where we score ourselves. So based on the pages that we just reviewed. Uh we received two hundred points for separation of duties. Uh and that's an all or nothing. Um the next item is, does the entity or gov- uh uh have a governing body? Um or governing body adopted written policies in the following areas. And we do have policies and procedures in all of the areas listed uh under number two. Again, I'll skip down to the areas where we did not score or did not give ourselves all of the points that were available. So number four. Uh our employees and elected officials required to annually commit in writing to abide by a statement of ethical behavior. Um a a number of years ago, we used to have a manual process um that was done throughout the city um to have all employees um review the policies and agree uh in writing to abide by those. Um uh we are hoping to automate that and put that into our workday systems going forward. We have not fully implemented that. Um but we have captured about half of the employees this year. And so based on that, we gave ourselves half of the points. Um the next one is have all governing body members completed entity specific um training for local special services. Anyway, for all those different areas, it's online training that the auditor um uh asked that all elected officials do within four years of term term appointment or election date. Uh and uh we've had um we've had five out of seven uh members of the council complete that so far. And so based on that, we gave ourselves fourteen of the twenty points that are available. Um the next item is number eight. Does the entity have a formal internal audit function? Last year, we actually gave ourselves zero for this item. Um we uh this year, we have appointed uh uh or the council has approved a budget for an internal auditor. We've identified an internal auditor. Um however, we have not completed an internal audit yet. Uh and so based on that, we gave ourselves half the points based on the progress. Um and those are the only four areas where we felt like we were not worthy of giving ourselves full credit. So based on that, um the total points earned were three hundred and sixty nine. You can see them at the top of the page out of a possible three hundred and ninety five. And based on the state auditor scale. Um that would put us in the very low risk um category again. And and thankfully Provo is large enough that we're able to have a good separation of duties um from a control perspective um throughout the city. Are there any questions?
So Dan, regarding number five, um this is just for cur- I'm just curious. Within four years of term appointment. So a counselor who's reelected would need to do the training again? Is that how this is designed?
That's the way that I would interpret it, is that once they're reelected, they would need to do it within four years of that date. Now, possibly it could be a year or so before, but I I think if I go back and I read um the instructions that the state auditor has provided, they're thinking it's after each time you're you're ree- either elected or reelected.
And having just taken this training, participated in this training once. Does it, does it change every couple of years or is it pretty, have you noticed if it stays the same?
I think it stays fairly constant. Um I don't think that it's been changed. Again, this was put in place. This entire process was put in place by the former state auditor, um John Dougal, and the current state auditor. Uh has not changed the process at all that I'm aware of. In fact, there's a revision date on on this of um December of twenty twenty, and I think that's the last time that there's been any changes to it.
Okay. Any other questions? So Dan, the um this, just to understand, the form was completed at, you've got a completion date of September eighteenth and a completed year ending June thirtieth. So it reflects the status.
It reflect.
June thirtieth?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. Next, we have a discussion regarding the Provo River setback and design standards. Which will be presented to us by Policy Analyst David Pyle. Hello, David.
Alright, I'll give a brief recap from our last meeting. Uh the hundred foot setback is the standard around the Provo River, and there is an exemption uh for projects that are part of a larger development. Or for single family or accessory structures subject to certain requirements, including the forty foot easement that we talked about in the last meeting. Uh what's changed since then is a couple of discussions with Public Works. In which they said that they have no uh concerns or misgivings about uh eliminating uh that exemption language. So uh the council can choose to eliminate the exemption and have a hard hundred foot setback. To leave it as is, or if there's some appetite to uh modify it to encourage certain types of development, we can make that happen as well. Yes.
Um I would like to take out the exemption, but I also think there could be exceptions with certain things like, like I think a hundred feet was like up here to the glass, the second glass. And there could be some riverfront stuff. You ever get some riverfront cafes or dining places or boutiques that could be closer? And which I would want that.
Didn't we talk about this last time? Yeah, but he's refined some things since our discussion.
So I think we need to make exceptions that can come to us. And then we need to make and maybe it's already in there, but particular is about the trail.
In fact, I think our discussion was uh that the exemptions would be around amenities.
Yeah.
And um not around size of the project and the the need to maximize square footage. That's not.
Yes.
But um we talked about restaurants. We talked about things that would make the the riverfront more intimate. Um those would be exceptions, I think, that should come to the council.
Well, let me weigh in there and just remind you that these won't come to the council unless there's a reason.
Hmm.
So.
But if we, if we had some language there that said, you know, based on the judgment of staff, if the proposal takes advantage of facing the river. You're just, you're not.
No, because it, like what you're, what you're talking about, what you're describing is administrative decision. Okay, so if you've, if you're creating criteria, if you create an exception in the code. The, it has to be the administration that applies and interprets the.
Oh, I measure, I'm not disagreeing with that. That's fine with me. I'm just saying, can we put language in there that says that that the standard is the hundred feet, but we leave it to the discretion of the administration with proposals. But we could specify amenities, forward facing, river facing. Um I I don't know what kind of language we would need exactly to capture what we're talking about, but I think we're, we've been bouncing around these ideas that.
Sure, and you need to do that because it's it's vital in order to prevent a legal challenge against.
This seems arbitrary.
It's vital to not have the discretion just be wide open. You have to establish the criteria. I just wanted to make clear that you're, make sure that you're understanding that it's going to be
Yeah.
Bill or somebody who is going to be applying the criteria. But yeah, so you need to figure out what the criteria are and put those in the code and and grant the exception.
So. Can we look at like boardwalk things, like what they have at boardwalks? Is that the kind of an idea that we're looking at? Is that what you see on a boardwalk at the ocean?
Trails, boardwalks, decks. Yeah, anything that I, I at least, I was just. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think this is kind of what we were getting at, but anything that sort of takes advantage of that space in a positive way. That.
And it could be some.
Brings the river to people and people to the river and in a in a either residential or commercial setting that um you know, helps to highlight the river.
Interactive.
But what I'm saying is, would it be helpful to look at something like San Diego's? Because they've got to have something. Some, some kind of policy, right? Some of those rivers or those coastal front cities. You've got to have some kind of policy of what they're going to allow it on. I mean, they're not allowing mechanic shops on their boardwalks. They are allowing food and stores and surf shops.
So not, uh that that seems like a different question than the setback question though, right? You're talking about types of.
Yeah, well, he was saying that we need to be specific on what we would allow.
Yeah, well, he was saying that we need to be specific on what we would allow closer than a hundred feet.
Yeah.
To the river. And so if we're looking at amenities like that, that's when I'm wondering if staff can look at. Some of the policies they've set in different coastal cities or places that have amenities along their river fronts.
Yeah.
And see what exactly they're putting in there, because I don't want to make this language up and pulling it out of my hat. Yeah.
So last time we caught Bill, you were going to actually take a look at this and come up with a recommendation. Did I miss misunderstand that?
Yeah, I I thought last time we looked at this, we talked about creating a design corridor. But this is creating some administrative criteria that be independent of that. So my question is, was this in place in design corridor or was this?
That that was the second part of my presentation. I was leading into that. Um right now, I would just like to get an idea of the the preferences as far as the setback goes.
So.
I think we all have to see.
Yeah, I think I think it's pretty pretty clear. Anything that enhances the river, people's interaction with the river. Commercial, if it's geared towards people enjoying the river, you know, no problem. Uh factory, no. Restaurant, yes. Boardwalk, yes. So yeah, anything that enhances that experience, I think, is is what you're hearing.
So would it be helpful as if you not only said what you would encourage or what you really don't want to see out because.
Okay.
For example, what I'm hearing is a single-family home would not be able to bend.
Exactly.
So it'd be nice if this said, if single-family is not something that would be considered for a decree in the crushment of setback.
Okay. Yeah.
What about like a motel or a? You know, those motels with cabins or um. Airbnbs with cabins or something. Is that something that would be amenable or?
I would think so. Um so I I'm not sure how best to capture that. Uh and maybe that's what staff should go and work on. Um can't think of all these exceptions right now.
So I think a good example, maybe um if you look at the redevelopment of the press property at the fifty-six-hundred North. That was redesigned to really incorporate the river into their plan.
Yeah.
So that is pleasing if you like that. That's um, yeah, that would be on the same lines as a hotel or something like that. Space and along the river that incorporates into the project plans that the public can enjoy it. Um but yes, the staff work on this recently.
What about like a wedding venue? Is that something that would?
Cause a wedding venue is gonna be beautiful. It's gonna be picturesque. If it actually happens, those are the kinds of pieces would be helpful. A- anything that makes it more attractive and beautiful and you want to spend some time.
It gives full access.
Yeah, and just full access, running, um hiking, hiking.
Are we worried about flooding?
Well, I I think, well, was that flooding? I think I thought that was not an issue from the public works. That the the setbacks that we currently have, cause I know that we initially had a a a condition addressing that. But I was hearing that that is no longer an issue, and that must be based on retention they're doing or water control or whatever.
Well, they raised the, they raised the minimum floor. I think that's why. They, if I remember correctly, that's what we kept at last time was that. This change of adding the exception that a hundred feet came about as kind of a throwaway add-on when they changed the. Floor depth of the flood plain in the site and was less risky flooding. So that's why I've.
Right.
All right, so the general feeling I'm getting is boardwalks, restaurants, Airbnb's, venues. No office buildings, factories, warehouses.
Parking lots.
Parking carts.
Like, um I guess you'd have to be, that's a kind of parking lot. If I can use the parking lot, that's great, because then I can have greater access. But if it's um.
Oh, a parking lot right off the river.
Well, it would depend on how it was handled. I mean, or what it would look like, how close it was, I guess, but.
But like the AMC parking lot?
No.
I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, yeah, it seems like the this kind of came up right because of the warehouses, of course. The complicating factor there was that they did actually propose some amenities for the river. Uh that's what initially. Attracted my attention on that was, oh, they're, you know, they were, but that wasn't, that wasn't. That wasn't an exception to the hundred-foot rule. It wasn't, I can't remember. It was an addition.
It was only forty. It's an addition.
Yeah. Anyway.
So maybe to help clarify for for staff, would the council be comfortable if? Council staff were to develop a list of uses for properties that would be distributed to the council?
Yeah.
Get some survey results and then provide those to Bill and his team to work on details of a design corridor. That would be.
You're still in those parking lots, Matt Close? Okay. No parking lot.
Just test.
Keep me on my toes?
Yeah.
Glad you're doing that.
And then the second part, which Bill alluded to, is whether there's any desire for some sort of design corridor.
Of course. Do we need to take a straw poll for that or are we all pretty much? Yes.
I think there's strong preference for design corridor.
I think it'd be useful that I actually have a motion in that case, if it clear on the record.
I would make a motion that that we investigate and uh put that draft of it isn't important.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Christensen with a second by Counselor Bogdan on the design corridor. Any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Adley?
Yes.
The vote is six-zero with Counselor Hoben excused.
Chair Garrett, I have one follow-up question, and then if uh he has an opinion on this, I'd love to hear what Bill, uh Bill's comment on this will be, but. Um the one thing that I'm looking at here, I think Bill mentioned this last time, as I recall, is that it may take a while to come up with this design corridor. So the one question I have is, are you comfortable with the exception being in there until the design corridor is created? Or should we, or should we start the process uh by noticing planning commission, which triggers pending legislation? To actually just delete the exception and then replace it with the design corridor when the design corridor is done?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have comments that you want to make on that, Bill?
Uh yeah, I think in most of our tests, we deleted what we've got now, what we adopted, what you come up with together. And the survey that David's talking about and replace that before the design corridor is, or while the design corridor is being worked on.
Okay.
Would that be all right?
Yeah, uh and this uh reminds us of timing again, because I know it's a big task. You've got a lot that's going on. How much time do you think you need? It seems like it was about that.
Yes, I would think we could do it just during the pending legislation. Things have to be on that. So it'll create those six months.
Well, it seems like it could be a good idea to withdraw the exception.
Yes, definitely want to do that, I believe. The only question is, do you want to adopt something in its place while the design corridor is being worked on?
Uh like, like what? It sounds like that would have to be a a mini design corridor. I mean.
It would be another exception based on the land uses that you're talking about. The specific ones that you're talking about.
And 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 I don't know how well-formed out you have in your minds what those criteria would be, so that I think the options are. You know, the options are leave the exception as it is, and anybody who applies while we're working on it could qualify for the exception. Delete it and replace it with nothing. And if somebody comes in before the design corridor is done and their plans are contingent upon being closer to the river. They can propose a text amendment to try to get what they want, and you can consider it in the context of what the proposal actually is. Or uh I think what what Bill was saying, you can, you can make a motion now that you want to delete it. But replace it temporarily with something that essentially says. This setback is subject to exception that in the discretion of the Department Development Services Director. For projects that accomplish the following purposes. And and you could and you could try to come up with a list. Of the things that you would be willing to let Bill consider and just grant an exception if you. But you've got to come up with that list. That's the hard part of that option. How many, how many requests are these are beginning? I mean, uh is this three a year, thirty a month?
My my understanding is a couple a year, maybe.
So maybe it's just we uh we get rid of the exemption. And it has to come to the council as a text amendment.
That would be fine.
There's just not that many.
There are nothing in process for, yes.
And we would agree on something that met the criteria that Bill was writing.
Are you making a motion?
Well, I mean, does that make sense? All right, I'll make a motion that we uh remove the exemption. Um is that that?
That's enough. I the rest of that is gonna happen automatically.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Christensen to eliminate the exemption with a second by Counselor Bogdan. Any additional discussion? We'll go, we'll ask for a vote then. Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Rachel?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
And Counselor McKay?
Yeah.
That passes by a vote of six-zero with Counselor Hoben excused. Right, and Dan, thank you for your outstanding work on this. This has been a. Issue that we've all been very interested in. We appreciate your research and work on it. We now have an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding the area where accessory dwell dwelling units. Are permitted. This will be presented by city planner Jessica Daneki. Hello, Jessica.
Hi, thank you. Um back again with another accessory apartment, because we don't talk about them often enough. In this case, I don't know what to say that hasn't already been said about the process for the ordinance text amendment. For creating an ADU. Um this property at eighteen forty-one North, fifteen fifty East is not in one of the overlay areas. Um so it does not have the opportunity to apply just with a rental license. It has to go through. The ordinance text amendment process. Um this specific property, uh there was a complaint raised against it. That's how we found out that it was being rented. The property owner has, there were two tenants in the basement apartment. Uh the property owner has been working to reduce the occupancy. Uh code enforcement officer who's over this case let me know. That one tenant has moved out of the property, um and the other one's move-out date is in this month. Um but we move forward this with this application because of proving uh an ordinance text amendment would be. A route to compliance for the property. Um.
Jessica, could I ask a a question about that? That my understanding was there were two violations, but I don't know if the first one was ever reported. Do you know anything about the back history there?
My my understanding is the the concern was occupancy. Um and it was because.
Most recently.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they had the the basement rental that they were using. Um.
So you had the one?
The the base, they were using a basement rental.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh.
I I was told that there was a previous one as well. There was a family that was living in the house in addition and then and then students, but.
Uh it could, so the case was opened uh the very end of twenty twenty-four and. Code enforcement officers went out several times, um but it wasn't until mid twenty twenty-five that someone actually spoke to them. So um it could have been that they had a family and it switched over to just two students in that interim. Um but we've been informed that it's just two students, now one, living at the property.
We just hit the pause button. We've got Scott here. Could you, could you speak to that?
Yeah, I just said. Then. The case was initially opened in the end of twenty twenty-four. My phone officers went out there many times trying to get ahold of somebody, talk to somebody. Didn't, wasn't able to get anybody until approximately the end of July of this year. And at that point, we found out that there were a couple of tenants living downstairs. So we never were given the specifics that it was a family living there. Um other than the owners themselves with the residents downstairs with the the tenants downstairs. So we we weren't told of any prior um issue, at least to that detail. Maybe the initial complaint was that there was a, was based off of a family living down there at the time. We just don't know.
Counselor McKay?
Um this is a constant thing where we can't get ahold of people. And like, oh, there's one Airbnb. That's been seven years supposedly, and they reported it for, it's been reported for at least two years now. But we're still investigating. And I don't know why we can't have all this evidence from neighbors, because we have we have pictures, we have testimony. They're having to put cameras on their property. Why can't we use that and just say you're in violation? The fees are starting. Proof to us otherwise.
Well, everything except for the last sentence was fine. Prove to us otherwise. And and what I mean by that is that we always have the burden of proof. So so we can, we can, we can try to proceed with that evidence, and I don't know what evidence. Uh Scott has been turned into Scott. I know that historically, lots of times. Neighbors complain but aren't willing to testify or to have their name included, but I don't, I don't know what the circumstances are here. We can certainly proceed based on evidence that. We we don't have to have personal knowledge. We don't have to have a city employee that has personal knowledge. We can proceed on. The culmination of all of the evidence that we have.
Pictures, testimonies, video.
We we can do that. Now, at the end of the day, if if they appeal and we're in front of a hearing officer. It has to be us who convinces the hearing officer that there's a violation, instead of them convincing the hearing officer there isn't a violation. That's just how the standard proof works. But certainly, we can use all of that kind of evidence that you just mentioned.
If I, if I may, there are many times where we do that, that we, we take evidence that we have from surrounding neighbors. And and pursue our enforcement efforts based off of that, not off of the staff.
Good.
Observing. But like Brian said, there there have been a couple of time, uh yeah, a couple of times where, you know. They pushed back on us and we had to go and get stronger, more evidence to be able to truly pursue a resolution.
Good.
Yes, I'll see.
So I think it was last year we passed a thing for the short-term rentals, the ADUs regarding their taxes. And their needs to, ha- what's happened with that?
I'm sorry, it's a significant issue?
The state told us we can't do it.
The state told us.
Uh we've we've passed, we passed a local ordinance requiring um the actual management companies like Airbnb.
Yes.
VRBO, et cetera, to provide, to provide us with, to register, provide us with certain information. Malia actually knows more than I do because she followed it, but my recollection is. We got that in place. We notified the companies before we received any of the required information for them. State legislature passed a bill and says you can't do that anymore.
Good to know they got our back.
What would have been this, what what was the state's rationale? How was how was that helpful? I'm sure it's helpful to them in some way. I I just can't figure out what that is. Lobbying in the short-term rental companies?
Yeah, the committee, the committee discussion was individual cities regulating how business chooses to management. Manage and operate. They felt it was crossing the line, but yeah, lobby. It was specifically like, we were like only on Utah that knew a many to the state code was really. Talking about tourists. They never said for both, but.
Right, but we do get tax revenues from all the short-term rentals, right?
We should.
We should.
If they are registered and going to them.
Yeah. But could that not be used as evidence that they're operating an STR if they? It would be stinky to to say you're following this rule and you're paying your taxes and therefore we now have evidence to shut you down, but.
I'd have to relook and see if that, because the other one that they did a couple, even years prior to this, is they passed one that said you can't. Use their advertisements as evidence against them.
Right.
I don't know, I don't remember the exact language of that uh statute. I don't know if it would apply to their tax.
You can use their advertisements evidence now, but it has to be secondary.
Yeah.
And I believe taxes are the same, but I can double check.
Okay.
That's something.
So I've got a somewhat related question, but, and maybe, I don't know, Jessica or Scott could talk us through how this works, but if, if you get a call on a property like this and I, I, I'm asking because several citizens I've talked to, and by the way, this is like the most I've talked to citizens in a long time. I mean, from my district, I guess, maybe, uh, it almost, almost compares to the library. But in some of those conversations, uh, there's been a concern raised that the city appears to be enabling, um, violators to sort of conform, you know, to come into compliance rather than getting punished. And I, I, I'm not entirely sure that that's a fair, I don't think that's a fair, uh, description of what's happening. I mean, what I've said as well, I would assume that if you go to a house and you say you're in violation and they say, well, what are our options? Uh, it, I, I think it's appropriate that they know that they could pursue this kind of an avenue. It's not like the city saying, hey, um, we'll look the other way if you'll do this, right? I, I just wanted to get clarity on exactly what the process is by which you talk about a violation with the people and at what point they are invited, uh, or told what their options are in terms of applying for a text amendment, that sort of thing.
Right, so generally speaking, absolutely. We, we go out to a property, we have the opportunity to talk to somebody, but then they'll, hey, here's what the current law is, here's what the code says, here's what you're in violation of, here's what you need to do to come into compliance with that code. There are often times when people say, well, do I have any other options? You know, what, what else can I do? Well, there's, there's always the option of petitioning the city council to change the law. It could be any law that's on the books. They can come petition, use the city council to change that law and thus bringing their property into compliance with the law by changing it in a manner that would allow for whatever they're doing on the problem. Um, we don't typically, um, proactively advertise, well, if you don't like it, let's go ahead and just try to change it. It's when they come to us and say, well, what are my other options? Is there something that I can do to make it legal? Well, yes, there is a process you can go through to make it legal. Here's what the process is. You have to talk with one of those city planners and they can talk through the, the text.
So, so in a, in that situation, I'm trying, well, I, I just wanted to add, kind of pee back on that and add to it a little bit because there are different circum, there's different scenarios that this principle could apply to, right? So I don't, I don't think Scott is suggesting, I certainly wouldn't advise, if, if somebody, if we went out and we've had this, if, if we went out to somebody and said, you're in violation because you are depositing all your waste into a septic tank and septic tanks are illegal in the city. And they said, well, what if I asked the council to change the law so that septic tanks are approved? I've got no reason in the world to think that that's something that the council has any interest in. And personally, I wouldn't say, okay, well, let's wait to enforce on the septic tank until that septic tank law has gone all the way through, right? But recognize, this is a different situation because there is a process in the code for people to apply for these things, right? Now, you've made a motion to remove it from the code and we're in the process of getting it out. But at the time that these people applied, at the time that these people were notified they were in violation, there's a section of code that says if you do the following, it's legal. Right?
And is it their code that says we have to hold off on enforcing until they go through that process?
Well, no, there's, there's a, there's a good section of code that says we won't, we won't issue permits for people that are in violation and there's a sub, there's another sentence in it that says, but we won't withhold permits if the permit would bring you into, into compliance. That's somewhat applicable here in the sense that what that means is we don't have a legal basis to say you can't even apply, uh, because this code says, well, we, we've got to let you apply because applying is how you fix your problem, right? Applying is how you bring yourself into compliance. Now, we don't have to approve it because in this case, because the approval method is the city council voting on whether to add this property to the map or not, right? Now, I, I mentioned this last weekend or last meeting and went into probably overly long history about it, but could, 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 could we handle this differently? Sure. Could, could code enforcement say, well, too bad, you've got to kick the tenants out and you've got to pay a fine. You can go apply for that, um, per, permit, but we're going to do everything we can to put our thumb on you until the council tells us otherwise. They could, right? And in some cases, as I, like the septic take, eh, eh, issue, for example, I think that personally, I think they should. This particular case seems a little bit different to me because of the fact that we had this long history of we allow special use permits and then we get rid of the special use permits, but we, but we leave in the fact that if you get your neighbor, your, your neighbor's signatures, you can get your house added to the map and there's a process for doing that. A-again, uh, you know, it, it's ultimately code enforcement's decision what to do about that, but I think that there are legitimate policy reasons why in this particular instance, they said, well, you're telling me you're going to follow through the, you're going to go through the process. I'm going to wait and see whether the council adds your house to the map before I, before I start prosecuting. Because if we, if we go through all the effort to prosecute and then the council adds the house to the map anyway, it, it seems like it's all kind of been for naught. Right? Now, again, that's, remember, this is only the second one of these that we've seen since the whole process changed.
Yeah.
And that you've already made, and you've already made the, the change that the process is going to go away, which I think changes the calculation going forward. But I, I understand where code enforcement is coming from in this case.
It's, it's still a political question for us as to whether or not it sets a precedent that we don't like, right? I mean, if we say, well, every time a violator comes and we say yes, then what does that imply? That's still our question to wrestle with in this case. But one other complicating factor, as far as I can understand, uh, Jessica and or Scott can answer this too. But, um, they purchased the house in April of twenty-three, which was at that time, they did have the special use permit, um, available to them, but they did not pursue it. I think that that's because they didn't understand it or that they got wrong information. I don't, I don't fully, I can't explain that. I mean, I'm not going to speak for them, but they didn't apply and had they applied, right? I mean, they probably would have gotten it. But they didn't and, and that's why we're, where we're at right now.
And like I said, and there's lots of other examples of this, like variances. I mean, all the time we get, we get people all the time that build their shed inside the setback without applying for a permit first, right? And yes, we will enforce on that and make them tear their shed down, but if there's the possibility that the board of adjustment would give them a variance to the setback so that they don't have to tear it down, our process typically has not been tear it down first and then ask the board of adjustment if you can build it again, right? Our process has been apply for your variance. Board of adjustment will hear the case. If they give you the variance, we won't make you tear it down. If they don't, we will. I'm back.
The other thing I wrestle with is they had an ADU prior to moving to this new location and they had an RDL. When I looked at it, they didn't even apply for the RDL for their vendors and how they applied for the RDL, I think at that point it would have been discussed about a process moving forward. So, so to me, there's a lot of things that they should have done, but elected not to do. But then they knew they should have done them, but didn't do them anyway. But I think we're bringing up an excellent question about, can you roll your slide back to the one before? Um, I would like to make a motion that we have staff look into code seventeen oh three one hundred. That's the one that allows for the applicant to move forward and bring forth some of what we're wrestling with right now, bring forth something to counsel to state of, you know, one that's appropriate. Maybe they could look at the AD process. They can't apply for a text amendment for so many years. Or, you know, maybe that's just, maybe we just need to look at how that process of even coming forward to an ADU would even be there. So I guess my motion would be for staff, for our staff to look at seventeen oh three one hundred and then also about allowing an ADU onto the map or whether we can just work with not having a map in code or how that would work. Maybe break that up into different things.
Yeah, um.
So number one, make one motion with seventeen oh three one hundred. Okay.
Well, um, yeah, because I, I think I'm tracking with what you're saying, um. I'm trying to figure out, how do we stop this craziness? Uh, I, I mean, the, the amount of energy that we're spending, that staff is spending, that
Residents.
That, that residents are spending. I just feel for the, everyone who's going to come to this meeting tonight, we're going to occupy all this time and we've got such huge needs in the city. And we're, we're like over rotating on, 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 on this exception. And so if, and, and people want these exceptions. Again, this is the third in the last three meetings, four meetings? No, we had one before that.
There was one, there was one that was starting to come up, but then it went away.
Okay. Um, uh, I, so I like the idea of, man, let's look at something that actually stops that. And I, I think we're already two thirds of the way there and I had talked to Council McKay about how to get what I think is the last third of already. In fact, we brought the, and I've made the same comment the last couple of meetings, but I think just your motion to repeal fourteen thirty oh forty, I think already gets us two thirds of the way there. You've already made the motion to take this application process out of the code.
Right.
Right? We just need to fight. It's got to go to planning committee. It's got to get drafted. It's got to go to planning commission. It's got to come back to you. It's going to be a month before you can vote on it, but the pending legislation rule already applies.
Right.
So.
So that gives us two thirds. How about the other?
Yeah, so the other third is, and this is the question, you know, Catrice has asked several times, well, can't we just put in the code that it's impossible to get one of these? I don't know how to do that, but the, the thing that I think you can do that I think closes the door unless somebody's just crazy and if they're crazy enough to do it in the, in light of this, you, in my view, you shouldn't fill any qualms about just saying no and not worrying about it. But I, I think if, if what you really want to do is say, we think this whole di-idea of adding individual properties to the map doesn't make any sense and we don't want to do it anymore. I think you just pass a council intent statement that says, we think exactly what I just said. And planning staff is just going to hand that piece of paper to anybody who comes in and asks. They're going to say, okay, you've got to pay a thousand dollar text amendment fee. You've got to turn in all of this paperwork for your, for your text amendment. And by the way, here's your chances of it getting passed. And I don't, if, if, if you go through that step, I think it's going to eliminate most of these applications.
So how about if you make that motion? Well, sorry, can I just
Yeah.
request that? I, I, I think that's a solution to the motion, but I'd rather instruct staff to come back so that we can discuss the ramifications rather than making that decision right now. I mean, we can't even make that decision right now. Because it's not a, it's not a publicly notified agenda item.
It's just a motion to look into it.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you were saying to make a motion to pass it right now, that sounded.
No, 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 no.
I know we can't pass her.
Okay, alright. That's all I was saying.
We're going to have to discuss it some more, but I, I think that comes closer to Becky, what you were saying.
Okay, so do you want to make the motion now?
Sure, um. Uh, so to direct, the motion is to direct staff, uh, help me with the, the language, just keeping it simple.
Getting the idea right, to prepare a council intent statement, compressing the council's opinion
or dis, disfavoring these types of applications. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
And that would be the other third, then, right?
Right, you're talking.
So the defense team would say something like about one lot reasonably for purposes that may be your approval, something along those lines.
Yeah.
Is this, uh, going to apply to neighborhoods? I mean, are we, are we going to?
That was the clarification that Bill just brought up.
Okay. It would be helpful and we, we don't have to get to this until we get to the point where you're actually voting on it, but there's a lot of, you know, if one lot is disfavored, is, is two lots also disfavored? It, it'd be helpful at some point if you expressed at least an opinion about a minimum size. Why don't, why don't we include that then in the, in the motion? So we have that discussion. Because it, um, do, well, because I still think there's a lot of, um, I have a lot of questions about tho- those criteria. So it'd be helpful to have staff come back with, um, a recommendation on that as well. Do you still second that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just add my agreement that I think that having that discussion matters because I don't like spot zoning. I don't like the map for one house, but if we say, if we just eliminate that, um, and there's no other avenue for somebody to make an appeal, uh, except one that's very expensive and very time consuming and most likely to be a waste of their time. It seems like we've cornered some people who might need flexibility. I mean, you know, we'll go discuss this tonight. And I, I think there are a lot of problems with how this unfolded. I think what it's done to the neighborhood is terrible. Uh, it, you know, but had they, had they, the house has some characteristics that are a little bit weird and seem, and I was thinking about that lot property that we voted on a couple of weeks ago that didn't meet our flag lot requirement and we ended up feeling like, I mean, not everyone agreed obviously, but it was a four-three vote, I think that we agreed to um, sort of spot zone that because we recognized there was something odd about that property and that it was desirable to get a property built behind it. And we're just going to find exceptions cropping up and we're going to find, of course, neighborhoods that may have feelings. So I'm, I'm just wary that if we're totally inflexible, um, you know, I'm not trying to re, rehash the ADU argument. I know I lost that one. But I am just trying to figure out if, if we, um, give people allowance for making an appeal when they've got some exceptional circumstances and may need to be heard by somebody. I know that's a really difficult balance because I don't like what this, this has created at all. So I'm very sympathetic to the rest of you on this. I just, I've been scratching my head trying to figure out what the solution is, how to fix it, and I don't know what it is.
So that can be folded into the discovery process as well. Malia, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I kind of, I thought maybe we would go down the strip, so I kind of thought about how to draft an intent statement, so.
We're split.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be too difficult and when we bring it back, I can kind of make some decision points like minimum number of houses, either are we opposed to reason applications or just a map application? Because technically the map is not reasonable. Like kind of some different decision points that we can then make in a work meeting and then all have a final that can then.
There, I also was thinking about, uh, let's include in that discussion the percentage of neighbors. Seeing about Travis's comment, where he said, okay, so sixty thirty or sixty-three, you know, uh, you know, two thirds, one third. And it's like.
We're neighbors, we don't have more signatures.
What's that?
We don't do any more signatures.
Well, well, but if you're talking about a neighborhood, I, I just think we ought to have that discussion too. Like, so what is the neighborhood and then what is everyone wants to do it? Is that that half, is it two thirds, three fourths? I think, I think we ought to have that discussion as well. Because if the whole neighborhood is going to go, I think Travis's point is well taken.
But how do you do that without signatures?
I will have that discussion.
Yeah, well, and, and there have been some suggestions. I think there, I mean, we talked a little bit about this two weeks ago, but I think taking the burden both off of the homeowner and the neighbors, uh, from having to have that conversation, I think the more the city can kind of vertically do the communications with the neighbors and that way it doesn't invite all this accusation, counter accusation of who's, who's representing the, the real story. The city's the one responsible for getting the information into the hands of the people who are saying yes or no. And if it could be done virtually so that they don't have to, um, you know, have face-to-face conversations that can potentially tear a neighborhood apart, I think that's better. We're the ones who are the holders of the, you know, we understand our code. We should be the ones who are responsible for explaining it to everybody involved. Anyway, that's another thought I've had is just, um, taking that pressure off of the neighbors.
Um, I have a thought on that. I think don't we charge developers money to send out those notices to the landowners within five hundred feet? Yeah, so I think if we're going to be responsible for this, we also have to pass that cost on to the ADU, ADU application. That's my comment on that. It's going to cost them, what, the eleven, twelve hundred dollars plus what it's going to cost us to gather information on whether it's fifty, sixty, seventy-five percent.
All right, if everyone understands.
All right, if everyone understands the motion, uh, I think we've got it recorded on this.
Just to work for your, you do a substitute motion on your own motion?
Yeah. Which was second.
Which was seconded.
All right, we'll vote then. Councillor Bogdan?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett, yes. Councillor, Councillor Woodbrook?
No.
Councillor Handley?
Yes.
Councillor McKay?
Yes.
Councillor Christensen?
Yes.
That vote passes by that. Motion passes by a vote of five to one with councillor Oban excused.
Yeah.
Councillor Bogdan.
Okay, so is there still concern about seventeen on three one hundred? About how it is worded and how. Because this one caught us and we didn't understand, do we need to put more?
Happy to look at that. I think, um, in reviewing it, I think. I want to speak for legal administration, but they have an understanding of what that meaning and how that practically plays out. So in a motion, if there is one, say. Certain considerations or certain sections of that section that you would like us to review or goal. Like practically how you, you would want that to play out.
Well, I know it was brought up earlier. And that if we do exemptions like this, that it's helpful to have them more specified out so that it's not just guesswork. It's, you can, you're allowed to do this for A, B, C, and D. But I do know with a lot of these conversations that I've had and I'm not Georgian, it's not my district. People are very upset that this application was allowed to move forward without any penalties. Or if there's even one that said they can't, why does the city have some kind, something in there that says you can't apply for a year? Six months or whatever after a violation is had. So I think it would be, in my opinion, it would be good to have staff look into it and see if there's more. Concrete things that are allowed to move forward and stuff that shouldn't move forward. So we're not caught there again with neighborhood issues. Is there a second on that?
Well, I like the clarity. I'm just wondering if we, if we get that clarity in the previous discussion, in the previous motion.
I think there's more than just ADUs that this applies to, right?
Yeah, let's have a discussion all the time.
Maybe Malia has ideas that I don't have. The, the thing I'm struggling with in trying to even understand the motion. Is I think what the most likely thing to happen is, is we're going to come back to you in work session and say, okay. We've thought about it and we don't know what you want, tell us what you want. Because I, I, I mean, you're, I think you're in, what I hear you saying is that you think that there might be. Certain kinds of applications that shouldn't be allowed to proceed. If the. Property owner has any current violations or any past violations.
That's what the code means, right?
Well.
Exception.
No, I mean. The, I mean, here's what the exception says. Says, the city shall not withhold permits or approvals. When necessary to obtain a notice of compliance or to correct serious health and safety violations. And, and, and what I hear you saying is that you think there are some times that we shouldn't apply that exception. And my guess is staff's going to, response is going to be, we don't know what those are and you tell us what they are.
Well, and I think that's the whole point to have our staff look at it and, and see what those. What those would be. I mean, the worst case scenario, they do come back and say, there's nothing that we look at and find. But they may look at it and say, you know, this does look kind of weird. What do you guys think about that? Just because this, this seventeen oh three one hundred has been a huge, a huge issue. And I just like to explore it just to see.
Oh, I don't know that it, it actually needs to be changed, but maybe if we have. More of kind of a tutorial or a memo or something on it explaining what it means, giving specific examples. Of how this is used either to deny a, a request. Or how a request is appropriate in order to, to cure the violation. That may be helpful. I don't know that there actually needs to be a change to this. But because this has come up as a point of confusion. We need to understand it better so that when we're talking to our, our residents, we can explain it clearly.
I think you've been given public input that has led you to believe it's more wide.
Sorry.
I think you've been given public comments that have led you to believe this is more wide open than it is. We have enforcement cases going on right now. Where they've tried to apply, uh, apply for some type of permit to stop the enforcement and we've said that's not going to fix the situation, we're going to move forward with enforcement. This, this specific situation with ADUs, yes, it would be. Um, a tool for somebody to delay enforcement as long as that avenue was in fourteen thirty-four oh four oh. Once you take that out, like Brian has said, I think we've taken away that opportunity. Um, it's just not as wide open as you may think it is based on that language.
And in fact, I. I've been struggling with this, with this as we've been talking about. I'm not entirely convinced that this section even applies. I think it may have been a red herring that it even got brought up. Because this section is about administrative processing of permits and approvals, which is not what this is. I don't think that even if the exception wasn't there, that that would have prohibited these people from applying for a text amendment. Because that's a legislative process, not an administrative.
And I, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with making a categorical decision that we're not going to allow that. I mean, it just seems to me that. But like I was saying earlier, we, we may have a lot of unintended consequences by being overly strict about somebody's. Opportunities to appeal for a text amendment, um, for whatever reason. And that this could apply to ADUs, but it could apply to lots of other scenarios as well. And, um, I think we, we want to respect a citizen's right to. Ask for those kinds of changes to laws. I think if we've gotten rid of this process like we have already, I think we're much less likely to have this kind of a. Uh, drawn out and, and contentious problem. Um, so I think, like you, you were saying, we've already solved a good portion of it. So I'm, I'm less worried about seventeen oh three one hundred, I'm more in favor of having that. The, the motion that was, has been made, I think, suffices for me.
But also in applying seventeen oh three one hundred, in the exception. Even if staff feels like an application being filed would appropriately stay enforcement. They're told, you better file that application expeditiously or we're going to move forward with enforcement. We don't allow them to use that as a means to just stall.
Right.
Us moving forward. They've got to file that application very quickly or we move forward with enforcement.
Well, that was part of the reason I asked the question because I was hearing narratives that made it sound like we were looking the other way. When violations happen and we're sort of enabling violations and I, I thought that was overstating it, but anyway. I understand the frustration and again, I think it's still a political question for us to wrestle with about. Precedents and that sort of thing.
No, legislative process is not quick because it's got to go through planning commission first. So I can understand the public frustration with how long this has taken. That's the process for a code amendment. But again, if you're going to get rid of thirty-four thirty oh four oh. Like Brian said, two thirds of the problem, I think, goes away.
Councillor Bogdan?
So my comment was, is. I remember not too long ago, it's been since I've been on council, there was a gentleman that showed up to planning commission meeting. And I can't even remember what he was there for. And then they came up and said, oh, he has a violation, this can't go forward. So. In my mind, I'm sitting there thinking, okay, we have one gentleman. Who's coming to planning commission and it's gone this far and he's rejected a planning commission from even presenting. Because of some violation that he has. But yet this one isn't even. Isn't even done anything and then they're allowed to move all the way through even though they had a violation. So I'm still wrestling with this either way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's, the exception is not as wide open as you may think. Because in the first case of the planning commission, the application they were applying for didn't relate to the violation. So we said, planning commission, you can't hear this, the violation still exists, we need to enforce on the violation. This scenario, this one you're hearing tonight, that's a different situation because of what you've allowed in thirty thirty oh four oh.
And plan, and again, I think part of what you're identifying is this constant tension between the fact that. Planning commission actually has two roles, right? Planning commission has a role to make administrative decisions to which this section would apply and would prevent them from making those administrative decisions. For somebody who's in violation, right, for granting the approval. Their other role is to not decide, make a decision, but to make a recommendation to you as a legislative body. On legislative issues. Make sense? So, so yeah, in, in a certain sense, there's kind of two different rules in the sense that if somebody is asking the planning commission to approve their application. And they have a current violation, planning commission points at this and says, I can't do it unless you, unless you meet the exception. But if somebody comes and says, we're applying to the council to do something. One of the steps is we have to get your recommendation along the way. There's nothing about this that prevents a planning commission from giving that recommendation.
So Bill, is that case in that time? Was it administrative process and it was not a legislative process?
I believe so.
Because I don't even remember what it was. I just remember the whole thing was stopped, he came in, it was just killed.
Yeah, I remember that too.
I, I think our previous motion will cover both of them.
I, I agree. I'm comfortable with the direction given to staff in the previous motion. But if your motion stands, we'll, uh, and your second, you'll call for a vote. Bless you.
Look, there's not support for it. If it's just me and Catrice, then there's no reason to, to move forward with it.
So you withdraw?
Okay, the motion was withdrawn. So unless there's any objection, we'll now adjourn the municipal council work session by unanimous consent. We'll reconvene at five thirty.